Hey Tom.
Hey Fran, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. I was looking for the agenda, what did I put it that all of a sudden I found it?
Oh good.
Okay, let me see if I'm on here all the way. My screen isn't bigger. My screen's not as big as I like. You can see me okay, huh Fran?
Sorry, I was unmute. I can't see you, so.
Okay, I'm gonna try to.
Start your camera.
I'm gonna try to come back in again. I'll leave meeting.
Hey Dylan.
Hi Fran, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
The chairman was just here, but then he's having a technical difficulty, so he left, but he'll be back in a second. So it's just us two for now, let's see.
Are you okay? Am I better now?
I can't see you, if you go to the bottom left, if, is there a red dashed line through the camera button? You can click on that. It'll turn your camera on.
I still have, it says open Zoom meeting on the dialog shown on your browser. If not, see a dialog, click launch meeting. I clicked on launch meeting, then either they have.
So you're in the meeting.
So I have a join the meeting or sign in.
You're already in the meeting, so you don't need to join it.
What else I gotta do then?
Okay, I will gonna ask to start video and then you'll be prompted to start your video.
Okay, the host has asked you to start video, so start my video?
Yes. There you are, I can see now.
Alright.
Can you see us?
I can see you, is anybody else on?
So Dylan, our new assistant planner is also here, can you see him?
No, so what am I doing wrong?
Okay.
I have mute, and then I have more at the bottom here.
If you look on the top, it says view. And if you click at the top.
You have a green button, then I have a red button, I mean, that must make meeting information, I have, you are using enhanced encryption. What did I hit? Wait a minute. What am I hitting wrong?
Yeah, so basically you can change it so that it's a gallery view and then you would be able to see all of us.
I'm not getting all that.
Dylan, I think he's doing speaker view, so if you talk, I think he'll be able to see you.
It's nice to meet you Tom.
Nice to meet you Dylan. Okay, so I got Dylan in there, so, so if anybody speaks, I'll be able to see them Fran, is that how it's gonna work for me then?
Yes.
Until I figure out what I'm doing.
You're on that setting, yeah.
Okay, let me figure out what setting I screwed up first, but as long as I can hear everybody speak and they can see me, that's all that matters right now. I'll figure out what I did wrong. Okay, so it's on speaker view, so if anybody speaks, I'll be able to speak with them and they can all see me now, okay?
Yes.
So welcome Dylan.
Thank you, I'm excited to start.
Are you, where you from, are you local or?
I'm from Pepperell, but I've been.
That's close enough.
Well, yeah, that's enough. I've been working in Loba.
Oh, good for you, good for you, welcome aboard, we wish you well. If you have any questions, don't feel free.
Okay, thank you.
Don't hesitate. There we go, a little better, hit the monk button.
Hey Tom.
Hey Caleb, how are you tonight?
Good.
Caleb.
Stay warm and dry?
Ah, well, I got to work from home today, so fortunately, yes.
Good. Yep, if it wasn't for Zoom, we wouldn't be having this meeting tonight, obviously. Yeah, this would have been, UCLA had to pick a date. Yeah, that's one thing about the Zoom, people can still get some work done.
Well, no, we're not, never going to have snow days anymore, right?
I know as a kid, I'd be disappointed, huh? When we were kids, we'd walk around the neighborhood, shovel in people's driveways to make some money, you know? Those days, you can't even find somebody to shovel you now. You went, I'm gonna make some money, I'm not doing that, I'm like, oh, okay.
Well, they want $50 an hour.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you're like, really? You can't find somebody. And then if you have a guy who's gonna plow you out, he won't get out of this truck and snow blow will do the steps, so I had, nope, I'm not getting out of the truck. You're like, man.
Oh, and hi Dylan, I noticed you're new to the staff.
It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi there, hi everyone.
How's your night out you tonight?
So yes, we have a new staff member on board, Dylan, he's here shadowing the meeting, so we're excited to have him.
We're very happy to have him.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dylan, Sinadu is on the, on the board that you're going to staff in, I believe, the community preservation commissions.
Yeah, I'm gonna be, gonna be staffing the community preservation boards, I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, so today is our representative, so you'll be dealing with her.
Thank you.
Yeah, and she's willing, willing, waiting to get started.
Yeah.
She keeps asking, what am I gonna do something?
Right.
I haven't heard anything about it.
I know.
Now you have your contact.
Great.
Now you have a contact, reach out to Dylan, say what's going on. Nice to have at least a contact, you know, it's a step in the right direction.
Yes.
Alright.
Richard, how are you tonight?
Okay Tom, how are you doing?
Better than driving in the snow, huh?
Hey, you got your boots warmed up, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I was just saying earlier, whether for Zoom, we wouldn't be meeting tonight, huh? Not this weather, yeah.
Hey Richard.
Bob, is that you?
That's me.
Hey Bob.
How are you doing?
Hi Caleb.
Hey, Richard. Fran, I got 6:30, so I'll give it one more minute, I think we have everybody logged in.
Sounds good.
I think I saw Jerry's name pop up a couple minutes ago. Are you with us there Jerry?
I saw him too, I'm not sure if he's having.
Yeah, I thought I saw his name there, but I didn't see him. So we'll give it a minute. Give another minute, see if Jerry's coming on. Yeah, like I said, I thought his name popped up, but I don't see that he successfully logged in yet. I just reached out to Jeff, he said he's having a hard time logging in, but I told him to take his time, it should be shortly. Fran, you wanna send the link to the agenda again by any chance, to Jerry?
Yes.
Okay, I'll let him know.
I just sent the agenda again, it says that he's here under participants, but I don't see, so maybe he could try calling in.
Yeah, I said to him, are you having a hard time? He said, yeah, I can't seem to get in. Okay, then I just put down, can you try calling in? Okay, and I told him that you'd send him agenda again, so.
Want me to send my grandson over?
It's already happened to me once this year, so I'm not complaining at all. Jerry was calling me, what's going on? I thought, I don't know.
It happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a new age, isn't it?
Yeah. I can see Jerry's name up there now, hopefully he gets through.
Yeah, he's there.
Says connecting. So Fran, you must be able to see that he's logged in, huh?
Yeah, he is, so I'm really unsure of why this isn't working.
Yeah, so he's not.
I think he should try calling in or using a different, a different device to try to access it.
Yeah. I just sent him that note, yeah. I asked if he could use his phone or call in, I told him we can see his name on the screen, yeah. Someone's calling in.
Yeah. Can you hear me alright?
Yeah, I can hear you Jerry, yeah. A little technical difficulty.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't know why I can see everybody, but.
Okay.
For some reason, the camera won't see the world, so.
Okay, like I said, it happened to me one time when you were texting me, so I know the feeling, so, okay, so I think we're gonna get ready to start? Are you all set?
Jerry, we're getting a little bit of background, like an echo from your phone, so if you're not talking and you mute, when you're not talking, if you mute, then it will cut out that background echo.
Will do.
Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome to the low planning board for Monday, January 1st, 2020. The first matter on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for January 21st, 2021. Any of the board members have any questions, comments, corrections?
Chairman will make a motion to approve the minutes for January 21st.
Motion is made by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Malovich, all in favor, say aye.
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 Do you vote yes?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that matter has been approved. Going along, we have a continued business, a month ago, meeting early January, and this is a site plan review and a special permit at 610 Gorm Street. Nelson Group has applied to the planning board for site plan review and special permit approval to redevelop the existing building located at the above address into a four-unit residential structure. The building currently has three residential units and one vacant commercial unit. The subject property is located in the urban neighborhood mixed-use zoning district and requires site plan review approval per section 11.4 to expand the residential structure with more than three dwelling units. Special permit approval per section 12.1D for the use, the variance under 6.1 for relief from the off-street parking. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes sir, thank you all very much, my name is John Bavuso, I'm from Nelson Group. We believe that an additional unit at this building makes the best use of the space. I mean, we know that housing is in a shortage in every city in the Commonwealth right now. We don't believe that another convenience store or small retail operation would be beneficial to the city or to the neighborhood. The retailer commercial is gonna require more of a traffic flow than a residential unit would. We did go in front of the zoning board of appeals last Monday night, they did approve our application with four conditions. One was that we updated the application from requesting two parking spaces to four, which we've done. They requested a topographic site plan showing the elevation difference on the property, which I did finally get this weekend and supplied it. It's about two and a half feet from the street to the highest dimension of the lot. We do intend to level that off, try to keep all of the rainwater on the site. That's why we're adding the planters around the building, which will not only provide rain gardens to keep the runoff, but also the buffer strip for parking from the building. Another one of their concerns was the trash pickup, which we are going to address, we'll have someone pick the trash up there at least weekly, probably twice a week, depending on the demand. They would like to come out after six months to do a review of the property once we start building, which is fine. They also asked us to do something with the fences, we're more than happy to replace the chain link fences on the property, but the survey showed that we only own one small piece, so I do plan on talking to the neighbors within the next week to see if they have any objection to us changing their fences. You know, it's an old chain link fence, it certainly could use a little work. You know, our company specializes in taking these blighted distressed properties, rehabbing them, bringing them back into what they used to be. We keep all the ornamental fixtures, the softets, you know, replace whatever has to be done. We revitalize the building and make it look nice, we provide safe, clean housing for families, we do not rent out by the rooms. You know, we keep a good eye on our property and try to take care of it. One other thing that came up was that there, we are gonna be able, with the size of the lot, we can only fit four off-street parking spaces. But there is plenty of parking on the street, should we require that. So, and we are go, we do have a couple of small areas on the lot with snow storage, but we do snow removal from all of our properties, especially instances like this where we make it a foot of more snow. So we do ask your support in revitalizing this building and making it look nice and providing safe housing to four families in the low area.
Thank you John, anything, anything else?
No sir.
Okay, so at this point in time, I'm gonna turn the matter over to the public, so at this point in time, if anybody would like to speak in favor of this project. matter over to the public. So at this point in time, if anybody would like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor, in favor? Hearing none? At this point in time, anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition? This point in time, hearing none? Anybody who have any comments or just want to say anything at all about the site? Anybody want to speak at all? Hearing none? At this point, I'll turn it over to the board members. Before, if they have no other questions to ask, yeah, I'll start with one quick question, if I may. Bob, I believe last time when we met, Caleb had a question about whether the four parking spaces would be assigned or not. Or is it just, you know, first come, first served? Or is it, or somebody can say, hey, this is my parking spot. This is where I belong? Or how would you handle that? So, you know, you have four units. If someone comes in, they pull in one of the spots and all of a sudden they have a guest come in, they take somebody else's spot. You know, like, so if I'm assigned number two, or if I'm not assigned any, I pull into two and then one of my guests comes into three, then somebody else comes home later on the unit and has no parking spot.
We typically do assign parking spots, especially when the site parking is limited such as this.
Yeah.
There would be one per unit.
Yeah, so, um, so look at, look at the parking layout. Would you, would you think that one of those spots is more preferable to get in and out of than others? For example, would everybody be assigned the same spot? Or like, would number one be harder to maneuver in and out than like, obviously, four or three?
I don't think any of them, as long as the first three that are perpendicular to the building pull all the way forward. I don't believe that number four, which would go where the old garage was, would have any difficulty. Of course, they will have to back out, but they're, we're just limited on space there.
Yeah, so I mean, basically, so you'd be willing to assign, so, yep, yep, if you, if you get approved, you have four units, and each unit would be assigned one of those number parking spots?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, you either tell them what spot they have, or they give a plaque or whatever, or you just let them know that no guest parking, and this is the one spot that you have.
Of course, and we would put up, but, you know, any violators would be towed.
Sure, yeah, I mean, because obviously, you know, someone comes home later than somebody else tonight, a night like tonight, and all of a sudden, there's no parking. Would be pretty frustrating. And I'm sure you can understand that, you know, especially when you have limited parking. I think you have to, you have, you should have to have it reserved for at least, you know, each unit should have one reserved for themselves. I think it's just, in my opinion, the fair way to do it.
Oh, definitely, a cleaner part of where off-street parking is, you know.
You want to say, you know, I'm into my unit, and this is my parking spot, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had to start, so just, so once I get a jump start, I'll see what the board members have to say. Thank you, John. Any other board members?
I have a couple of questions.
Go right ahead.
Your proposed trash barrels, no storage area. Just by looking at the plan, you know, we don't have the benefit of dimensions here. It does not look like you really have enough space for adequate snow storage. I mean, you're gonna have to provide space for the sidewalk, you know, the snow-covered sidewalk and your parking lot. I think you're gonna maybe have a problem there with the big snowstorm that's coming tonight. Would you have a problem with being required to haul all your snow away? I think you'd have a better handle on being able to manage that site, John, if you can take it all off-site. Would you be opposed to that?
No, sir. We do routinely remove the snow. I mean, it does say snow storage. It's also open and green space. Like, again, tonight, we're gonna get a foot of snow. We'll definitely have crews out there, you know, trucking the snow out. We load it up into our trucks to remove it.
All right. The other question I have, did you ever get a count of the number of parking spaces you could provide on the street?
It's within the confines of our property, it would be three on Gorham and two on Central.
You could get an additional five spaces on the street.
Yes, but that is public parking and, you know.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, but, you know, again, to manage that site right, where you can get on the street, I think okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart.
I have a question, Chairman.
Chairman, Mr. Caleb.
So, I'm asking the applicant. I follow up with Rich, Mr. Lockhart's comment. Regarding the trash barrels, I read that the ZBA required fencing around that area.
That whole area.
That's correct.
So, so I will, I will concur with Richard that if you have fences, then, then you can't probably pile snow there. And also, I'm wondering what type of fencing that will be, and hopefully, something that, that I would say go along with the character of the building. So, so that's a question.
We really haven't discussed it. My personal preference on fencing would be the chain link or some other type of fencing you can see through. So if there's anything, any trash or anything wrong on the property, it's readily visible to us when we drive by. You know, we do stop and inspect our properties at least monthly, but if, if you saw something on the other side of the fence, we'd like to know about it right away. You know, we don't want to put up a solid barrier that's gonna hide things. You know, both from a clean point and a safety point of view.
Gotcha. And, and regarding the chain link fence that you mentioned on the, on the, I would say, the property line, what would that, are you replacing with NR chain link fence or other type of fencing?
That's not our fence, so we have to go talk to the owners about that, which I plan on doing. And again, I would like to keep something like the chain link that you can see through, you know, just so it's visible. You know, but I have not talked to the owners yet. The survey showed that it, we do not own the fence.
Okay.
But I can't imagine they'd have any problem with us changing it for a new and improved fence or something cleaner.
Okay, then. That's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Caleb.
Chairman, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure, absolutely.
I was looking at the updated renderings that were sent, I think, a couple of weeks ago. And I think that Caleb brought this up at our, the last time we heard this item. But on the rendering, you're showing some updated lighting on the sidewalk and also striping at the pedestrian signals. And I'm curious if that's part of the proposal. I think it would be an improvement, especially the striping at the pedestrian signals that are there. And so I'm curious if that's been discussed and if that's part of the project.
Not at all, ma'am. I believe that's existing. The pedestrian crosswalk and the signals. I'm not positive. I think the crosswalk is striped. So that.
I'm just basing, I'm just basing it off of, there's project photos that were part of this mission, and the striping is pretty much gone. But in the rendering, it's shown striped and with sidewalk lighting, and I don't think the sidewalk lighting is existing.
No, we, we typically would not add lights. We could put lights on the building, but we would not install lights on the sidewalk. That's city property.
Okay, then my comment is just that I think maybe some lighting and some striping would be an improvement. It is shown in your renderings. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you. We would definitely have lighting in the parking lot. You know, we put motion detectors on all areas, so if someone pulls in at night, the lights come on, you know. Safety is our first priority.
You know, you're talking about the pictures there with the crosswalk. It's basically just see a little bit of white and then it's non-existent going into the street?
Yeah, exactly. So the existing photos show just about no striping left on the crosswalk, and then the updated renderings, they do show, like, you know, beautiful striping at the crosswalk. So that was the two images that I was comparing.
Yeah, I can see one of them, which is on the, it looks like the Central Street side where the hydrant is, you can see two white lines. It probably goes out. The width of the car that's parked there, the van, and then it's gone. And then on the other one on Gorm Street, same thing goes out a little ways, and those two lines are gone. So if you could maybe possibly work with the city to get those crosswalks up to speed.
Of course.
You know, you can just see what, on the photos that we've seen, they go out and they stop. That's basically what you're talking about, right, Sinead? Those two? I can see from the pictures, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, there are two on the two opposite streets.
Yeah, I can see them now. I just pulled them out of my pile, right? Okay.
Okay, absolutely. I'd be glad to contact Public Works and see if the crosswalk restripped.
Yeah.
It could be clean. You know, we like to have a clean.
Yeah, I mean, it's a safety issue. I mean, obviously, if you can do it, I mean, yeah, especially, you got a hydrant there on one, right by the hydrant on one, one part of the, of the, looks like.
Sidewalk, yep.
Yeah, what's that, Central Street?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Thank you. Those are my only comments.
Thank you, Sinead. Anybody else have a question, a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be the, the voice speaking from the, the screen here. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, we can hear you fine, Jerry. Thank you.
Okay, okay.
You're still with us, Jerry.
I am, I am. So certainly looking at the, the updated site plan that was sent to us today that incorporated elements from the, the ZBA, certainly are an improvement. It's a, it's a tight site, and I think everybody has acknowledged that. But obviously, it is going to be an improvement with the, the facelift to the building. And truthfully, from just the economic usefulness of the building, you know, trying to make a successful retail operation on that first floor, it'd still be very difficult in that spot. So I think that's from just making the building economically viable, I think this is probably the best option. Obviously, the parking is not ideal. There's no question about that. I like the idea of the, the suggestion of the updating the striping, because I think it, to a point, whoever is going to live there is going to be walking a little bit more too. I think, I don't think there's enough parking available for everybody. So I think just to make the entire site safer, access and egress from the site for pedestrians as well as vehicular entrance and exit. I, I do wish we could see a little bit more what the fencing is gonna look like for the, the trash containers. So I certainly would, would wanna, I think, I'd like the DPD to have the final sign-off on that. But I have a question. Fran, and I'm just, and I can't recall if there was anything, is, is it, does storm water management have any issues with the site? Or are they still reviewing any, any engineering on this?
That's actually a good question in response to today's updated site plan. They reached out and said that they'd be interested in having some sort of, I'm just pulling it up here. Yeah, some sort of a stormwater system to manage the roof and parking lot runoff. So that's just something to keep in mind with the.
Yeah, I think that would have to be conditional upon that, that review. I think that's, that's important, whatever they're gonna require on that end. But other than that, I think, Mr. Chairman, that's, again, I, I like to see the fact that they're, they're trying to preserve the building and, and reuse for it. I think that it is what it is, as far as that spot. I think it's important to require that snow removal take place on major snowstorm. I, I think any kind of a snowstorm that would, that would result in a loss of any parking spaces really should trigger the removal of the snow from the site. Now, obviously, the enforcement of that is very difficult, but I certainly would wanna condition it upon that. I would hate to see any sites be eliminated as a result of snow storage. But that would be my comments at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fichette.
Mr. Chairman, I only have one comment. I, I'm, I agree with Mr. Fichette. I think this is the best you can do with this particular location. I think the Board of Appeals recognized that. I think we should too. The other thing is, is a concern. And the concern is backup traffic on Central Street. When the signals are employed, where that pedestrian signal is, is the crosswalk, and cars line up all the way back. So it would be very difficult for people to get in and out of that parking lot in a very timely manner. You'd have to hit the cycle of the lights, and people coming onto Central Street to make a turn in there would have to wait until that line of cars is cleared up. That's just a point I want to make.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Yeah, I can see, totally see what you're talking about. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, 'cause if you're in a queuing position, waiting for the light, you have to wait your turn to get in and out.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Otherwise, I like the project.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
The best we can do.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. Any other board members have any further questions or comments? If not, we do need two votes this evening. One for the site plan and one for the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the, the site plan with the following conditions. That the, that the DPD review and sign off on the final fencing to be installed around the trash reciprocals. The applicant to work with DPD to restripe the crosswalk at that location. And that the applicant will be required to remove any snow that would result in a loss of any parking spots on the site. And then that the project would be subject to final stormwater management approval as well.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we have the motion with one, two, three, four, five conditions. You have the conditions, Fran? Okay, any questions?
I don't have any questions, no.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Fichette and second by Mr. Malovich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you have a vote, yes? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none? The site plan has been approved. Now we have to go forward on the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit with the same conditions.
Same conditions as previously outlined by Mr. Fichette on the site plan?
Yes.
Okay, and do we have a second on that?
I will second it only if we put a condition that meets the ZBA's approval, all the conditions and the ZBA's approval.
Is that acceptable to make of the motion, Mr. Lockhart?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right. So basically, it'd be the same conditions as outlined on the site plan by Mr. Fichette, also including that incorporated by reference would be the ZBA recommendations on the site as well. So I know basically when we talk about the fence for the trash and the stuff, it's in a zoning ordinance anyways that it has to be screened. So obviously, DPD, excuse me, DPD would know exactly what type of screening is required to do on that. So I don't see a big issue on that. I think, Fran, people can work with, work that out. I don't think, should be a problem with working with John to resolve that issue. Like I said, they have standards in place on what has to be done, so. So, so we have the motion made and seconded. So, did everybody vote on that? I'm sorry. So, oh, no, we added that. Okay, so we had to make a motion, we had it amended. So therefore, we have a motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Do you have a vote, yes? Any opposition? Hearing none. The special permit is approved as well. The matter is approved for the special permit and, uh, and site plan. Good luck, sir. Wish you well. Um, hopefully the project comes out nice and, um, will look a little nicer next time we see it.
Yeah, that's a nice job.
Certainly will. I'd like to invite you all to stop by during construction.
Sure.
I do have one question, if you have a moment.
Sure, yes, absolutely, sir.
I would more than happy to go to the traffic commission to see if we could get, you know, one of those white Xs so that the traffic at the stoplight stops beyond the entrance to the driveway, so it doesn't block that. Would that be acceptable?
I have no problem with that. I think anything to help that traffic flow would be in the interest of the site.
Yeah, I do.
Members concur on that? I mean, I think it's a better. Right? Anybody have objection to that? I mean, I think what he's trying to do is improve the traffic flow, people getting in and out of the site, which always is a, uh, is an improvement to any site, in my opinion.
So the one is the red light there not blocking the entrance to the driveway so people could still get in and out.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, if you could do that, um, we wish you all good luck with it. Yeah.
Sure, good.
Right? Any board members, any objection to that?
No.
No? Are we okay on board? All right. I don't want to speak for everybody, so. Okay, thank you, sir. Good luck.
Excellent. Thank you. And Fran, could you forward me that email from Public Works about the storm water management of the engineer?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you all.
Well, you have a contact person, right, John?
I am the contact person.
No, I mean for, for the storm water.
Correct, right.
When you have to follow up, you know who to call. Yeah.
Exactly.
I'm calling someone, who? Or I speak with so-and-so. Make it a little easier, cut through the.
Right, nice to have a name.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome, sir. Good luck.
All right, thanks.
So moving along on the agenda, do we have any newer old business? Oh, and no? I guess we do have to make a nomination for the historic board. I know we always voted in. We do, uh, annual, mid, annual nominations early in the year, but I know that the historic board nomination runs out late in the year, so we do have to vote again. So we do have to vote for our historic board nomination. And with that, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Richard Lockhart.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so who's second that first? Was it Caleb or Bob?
Caleb. All right, I'll take.
All right, so, so we have a nomination for Mr. Lockhart by myself and seconded by Mr. Malovich. Okay, so do you have any, have any other, um, notifications from board members?
Just the historic board will be meeting a week from tonight. Not sure. The, the activity level has been quite low. I'm not sure what's coming up, but, uh, other than murals, we'll report the next time.
Actually, I think I read something in the paper the other night about murals in the city.
They're common.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else on that? If not, I'd like to, uh, congratulate Mr. Malovich. He got reappointed for another, uh, five-year term on this, on our board. Congratulations, Bob.
Thank you.
And with that, I want to thank the city manager for appointing you, and I also want to thank the city council for approving you. Look forward to working with you again, Bob.
I guess he didn't forget who I was.
Well, a lot of people will remember you from DP. You know, uh, you know, so congratulations with that. And obviously, Jerry. And Jerry, before you signed in, we were introduced to a, a new person to work with us is Dylan Ricker, who's on the screen, who you probably see above there.
Very good. Yeah, I've seen him on the screen, yeah.
Yeah, so he's new and, uh, we still, yeah, so, um, we have him as well. So those are the only updates that I have. If anybody else has any updates, fine. If not, we can entertain a a, a motion to adjourn. I also know that we still have, Jessica's on with us tonight watching us as well, as I'm, I'm the new, uh, worker on the board. I mean, I'm working with the board, I should say. So, uh, nice to see some more faces helping out with, uh, with Fran, because obviously she's been, uh, doing quite a bit, carrying a big load by herself. So, uh, again, we welcome them both. So, after saying that, if nobody has any further matters, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion made, seconded by Caleb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes, yes? Any opposition? Hearing none. That motion's carried. We have adjourned. Stay safe, everybody, and stay warm.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you, everybody. Thank you again. I appreciate all your help.
Nice to see everyone.
Yes, thank you.